We're going to open up this regular meetings of the City Council and the CCA for the record. Today is Monday, November 21st, 2022, it is now 6:30 PM. And participating in person here at the City Hall Auditorium are Councilman Owen Quinn, Councilman Orona, and Councilman Lenicia. And for our corner, we have Councilman Oliver participating in his own brief. So before we begin the meeting, could we all please just stand in front of the microphone? So before we go into our regular agenda items, item one on the agenda is a presentation of certificates. And you know that Owen Quinn is somewhere in the house. Can you meet me in the microphone here? I can't believe that we need to do something like this than Thanksgiving. We have a lot of tribute to express our gratitude to our residents and our citizens that are living above the ground all the time. So I wanted to take this opportunity to take a moment and acknowledge some great work that Owen Quinn has been doing for the city over the last several years. I would even say over the last several decades. As a former mayor consultant, there have been plenty of opportunities for him to step up and serve the public through his point of view. But at this point, as a director for the United Way, sometimes his work takes him in a different direction that you might not think is where your way to begin your morning or end your evening. So in particular, at this time, I wanted to acknowledge what Owen had been saying over the last couple of years to help our unsheltered homeless find a safe, warm place to sleep during the winter time. He did this as a director, he had your way, but beyond that, he shared responsibilities of doing so. Those are the first information, showing up at a homeless shelter, making sure that the census was taken, making sure that the phone was being filled out, making sure that people were greeted and that their concerns were being listened to. So we wanted to offer you this certificate of appreciation by the mayor of the same town who presented to Owen Quinn, the executive director, United Way of New York West Connecticut. In recognition of your leadership, hard work, and commitment to managing cold weather overflow shelter in our community over the last few years, your energy, passion, and dedication to provide the highest level of service for our most vulnerable and greatly valued, is greatly valued and appreciated, especially holding the unforeseen challenges brought about by the coronavirus pandemic crisis. Thank you on behalf of the grateful city in British North, I encourage you to set my hand across the beat to fix the serious city in Torrington on the 21st day of November in the year 2022, and ask for your... I don't want to say this a little bit because when we say the challenges of providing shelter for our unsheltered in winter time, I don't even stress the struggles about the kind of work that needed to be done, the timing of the work that needed to be done, and the amount against on top of it.
Sure. I'm going to apologize for my back because I think I should address the City Council, but you'll hear my remarks anyhow, if that's okay with everyone. And Mayor, thank you. I made a startling discovery when I parked the car in the city clerk's parking spot, which is illegal. And then I tried to come up the old back way from where the mayor parks the car, and to my dismay, I don't have a key to that door, so I was locked out. I have to enter like every other person, so that was my coming back to City Hall. Thank you for your kind remarks, and thank you for all the people that are here. I just want to say that running the shelter was an eye-opening experience. We hired some great workers. We at least last winter saved five lives, three that had epileptic problems in the morning. We were able to get the ambulance there. I myself was able to nartan someone on New Year's Eve back to life, putting five nartans into the person. But that's what everyone in the staff did, is they took out a responsibility. And you're right, Mayor, we didn't grieve everyone. I was there every night for six months and got to know every homeless person by the first name and know what their issues were. And in this community, it is not relegated to the city of Torrington, the town of Winchester. It is everyone, the communities that makes up Litchfield County, and they all have homeless problems. The difference from the year before last to this year was tremendous. More mental health issues, more alcohol and drug addiction, more just emotional stuff. We went from housing maybe 15, 20 people on a bad night to 35 to 40. So it's taken out a proportionate increase that is startling. And I do certainly wish the Northwest YMCA, all the luck in the world with running this, I hope they have the same success of not watching many people perish during the winter months. But I would just like to say one thing because it's not often that we get to, you know, talk in front of the City Council about the United Way. And some people think that the United Way is just a matter of raising money and distributing money, and although we do that to the 26 partner agencies that make up our United Way family here in Northwest Connecticut, we're more than that. We do things that are impactful on our community. As you know, Mayor, you asked the United Way to step up and do census work, which meant that all the agencies that are in Northwest Connecticut, all the school systems, get additional money by making sure that there was an accurate count, to make sure that Northwest Connecticut, City of Torrington, Winston, and all the towns get exactly what they need for their proportionate share. When COVID broke out, we set up a COVID-19 response, and we developed a system where we could send gift cards through their telephone so that they could purchase the needs of their family, whether it was rental, electric, whether it was food or prescription drugs. We've done the Food, Feed Your Neighbor program. We just had one of the largest food drives with Feed the Children, a national chain with Price Right, that Mayor, you were there and spoke. We do the Vida Income Tax Program for anybody making less than $80,000. We provide free tax help for them and their child tax credit, and their refund getting properly put into their pocket means that they are self-sufficient for another week, another month. We worked with the Litchfield County Learning Center, June Zeiner, who was honored recently by the Rotary Club. We were the fiduciary agent for that wonderful organization that took kids from the Board of Education syllabos, they brought them to the learning center, and mentors and teachers were there to provide education for them. I could go on about what we do, but we also work very closely with Dr. Akira, many of the people that go into the shelter after losing all their furniture. The United Way has a program called Find the Home where we get furniture and we deliver it and set them up in their home. We do camperships for kids during the summer, and we are like to see ourselves as being in the community, not just exchanging money, but making sure that where the need is, that's where the United Way of Northwest Connecticut is here. I would like to just thank the board members that are here, the chairman of the board, Jim Hutchinson from Sharon Hospital. I won't go through all the names because that will end in disaster, maybe forgetting somebody. But there are members of the board, and if they would just raise their hands, I would like to thank them for being here. Mayor, I've said enough. I just want to say thank you and to the board councilmen for this recognition. It was unnecessary, but it certainly more admire, more at wall twisted my arm, and I did make that higher when I was in the mayor's office. I did a pretty good job, don't you think? Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Just want to take a moment to hand out Tom Kent Deffer. Can you meet me in the microphone? So, and to say, because it's worth repeating, what better should be issuing these acknowledgements of the good work that our volunteers and our local organizations do, being Thanksgiving is an opportunity for us to express our gratitude. So today, I am providing to Tom Kent Deffer a good deed award. This was an award that our local planning and zoning commission and land use stands and the weapons commissions all decided that there are so many volunteers, individuals that are doing such good work quietly, whether it's a cleanup day or just making sure that the trails and sidewalks in the city are certainly demonstrating that we're putting our best foot forward, and Tom is one of those people. And while this award is specific to your activities with the Toronto Trails Network, your recycling committee, and the conservation commission, I think I would be very modest if I didn't also add that Tom is our editor and proofreader and voice of reason whenever we're trying to change our ordinances. And I'm grateful every time you come to these meetings and share with us what your thoughts were. I was speaking with Jacque Wayne, Toronto City, a little earlier, and I said, everything that needs to be reflected in what this community wants us to do, and you certainly have provided that voice and that feedback. So I'm honored to be able to present this certificate to you in recognition that you have been an active member of the Toronto Trails Network, Toronto Recycling Committee, and has participated in many conservation official needs and events. During the city's World Clean Up Day held on September 17th of 2022, Tom led the effort in filling a 20-pound dumpster with garbage from the Monarch River and city-owned conservation properties. So not just for those efforts, but everything that you do makes us better. I want to give this to you.
Thank you very much. Well, I do appreciate this, not necessarily looking for it, but I think I would like to just use my opportunity at the microphone to encourage a lot of the young people I see in this room to be, to look for opportunities to volunteer in the community. There's probably many things that can be done, you know, there's volunteer fire departments, there's positions on city boards and commissions that are looking for people, and so I would be like to just encourage anyone, young and old, to consider volunteering in any way possible. Look for an opportunity, you know, even if you have a busy schedule already, but you can always, you know, find time to have an opportunity to help out the community. It's a very rewarding thing. I know Owen has expressed his views too, that you get, actually in volunteering, you actually get more back than you put out. So thank you very much.
Because I know that when you're going to be appearing on future ordinances, the crowd here is obviously here for a much more rewarding and good reason. So I want to turn this microphone over to Ed Arum. If you would, talk a little bit about the recipients of certifications and certificates this evening?
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. You know, there are many people work together, City Council, Board of Finance, Building Committee, the Board of Ed, we're all working for one thing. So the children, children, they're really big children, I'll tell you. For the children of Torrington who graduated the schools to come back and work in apprenticeship programs, to be union members, to make money, to bring their family, to buy a home in Torrington. The other day, my compadre over there, Mario Longahugo, so we're on the project, we're looking around, and we see this young lady who's about 32. And Mayor, I says, what is this young lady doing? Well, she is an apprenticeship for the ironworkers, April. Stand up there, young lady. Torrington resident who was putting the school together as an ironworker. I couldn't lift that stuff at all, so, but we appreciate it. And here, we're going to have the Connecticut State Building Trades, the training program, Joe Tono is who set it up, and we want to give some certificates to people who have graduated. And it's amazing to see the young people come back who live in Torrington, graduated Torrington High School, who are now part of a building project, and who hopefully the economy and everything, they'll stay, they'll have a family, they'll buy a home, and they'll be taxpayers now. So Joe Tono, please.
Mayor, helpful members, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Joe Toner, I'm the executive director of Connecticut State Building Trades. I mentioned this earlier, we had a little ceremony, pre-ceremony, before the ceremony, and I actually feel like I'm part of this community, I've been up here for so long, and you actually accepted me. I'm not accepted everywhere I go. I'm accepted in Torrington. So I'd like to thank everybody from the council to the building committee, to Board of Ed. Thank you for everything that you've done for us in our partnership with you folks here in town. It's a true partnership in the building trades in the town of Torrington. We committed to make sure that we're going to recruit here residents and enroll them in the careers of the building trades. And tonight's a special night for these 10 folks that are here in front of us. We have 10 young men that completed the 40-hour credential week with the building trades. They're up in Hartford, Connecticut. They stayed overnight at the Labor's Academy, the Labor's gracious enough to host this group. It was a 40-hour certificate week, OSHA 10, scaffold builders, silicone awareness, basic construction certificates that these folks are going to need for direct entry on the job here in Torrington, right? And those credentials are just the beginning, because those credentials are just to put them in a place where when they're enrolled into our apprenticeship programs of their choice, which I think half of them are placed as we speak tonight out of the 10, and then the other five, we're working on placing them, and they'll be placed within a few months. We'll be back again in the spring. We met with Barbara Beebe, with the counselors, and myself, Delanda, our team for the Building Trades Training Institute. And, you know, I'll share this little point that we decided, we do a lot in the Hartford area before we expanded statewide with the Building Trades Training Institute, and we want to do a little subclass with the females that are interested in the trades. So we did that with council, Councilor Beebe, we're going to start identifying some of the young ladies that are interested, and then, of course, we'll be back in the spring for the career fair. I think at that time, as I mentioned earlier, I think these guys are going to have plenty of money in their pockets, right? They're going to be, they're going to be working on the site, having careers in the building trades. And at that time, I think the neighbors, the friends, the relatives, the second recruitment's going to be a lot easier than the first, right? It speaks for itself. So on behalf of the building trades, for all of us, we thank you for the time, and I'd like to call off Belinda Rivera, who's the director of the BTTI, and Ted Grabowski, who is the president of the Greater Harlem Building Trades Council, to call up our graduates.
David Alvarez.
Daniel.
Yeah, Daniel Alvarez.
Danielle Alvarez.
Welcome over here, which is interested in for trade.
Can you say what the future trade is?
Yeah, my name's Danielle Alvarez, I'm interested in being laborer.
Yes.
Jessmanny Alvarez.
I'm interested in pursuing the laborer's trade.
Yeah, I got two.
Gerald A. Gilat.
I'm interested in masons.
I'm interested in carpentry.
And Lerna.
Hey. I'm interested in a pom.
I'm interested in the labors.
The Oregano. Yes.
Hello, I'm interested in labor.
Congratulations.
I'm interested in the labors.
I'm interested in becoming a laborer.
Noah Ponzi.
I'm interested in a pom.
I'll just stop for a minute here. We've obligated for three apprentices positions. We're interviewing two more to start January 1st, and a four-week pre-apprenticeship program, and then we're going to insert them right into the project. So we did quite well with this class. Our population, our workforce is aging, we're looking for younger people to come into the trades, they're coming into the labors. We do a little bit of everything from hazardous waste work to heavy construction to concrete. You can't build anything without us. So we're out there, we've got an unbelievable facility in Hartford, Connecticut, and we can't wait to get these individuals up there and get their apprenticeship going. Thank you.
Tendis with the labors also. So he's the business manager of the labors local on top of the building trades. But one thing I like to say also before we finish, so the folks that are facilitating interviews with the folks that are going into the plumbers, the pipe fitters, electricians, and the masons, so we're in the process of doing that. Every apprenticeship program accepts people at different times, and we're going to make sure that these folks will all be enrolled before the spring so they can get in another job. So thank you again for the time, and we appreciate the partnership.
All right, I'm going to move into our next agenda items, and I'm going to give a moment before we do so, so the room can clear, and you can celebrate with your families. Congratulations, all of you, and happy Thanksgiving. So we're going to move into the agenda, which is a five grand town motion to open the meeting for public and push the section forward, subsections in the council, and then we'll be seeing needing those procedures. Thank you. So, my name is Joe, second vice president, eleven, Owen Denver. We're open to the public for comments. All right, we'll move into item three. I will take this in two parts, three A, I'm interested in Washington, except for three minutes from November 14th, on the first floor. So, we have councilmen, squadron, the second vice president, one of nine. Questions or comments on the minutes? During none, hold on a favor. Any opposed? Any questions? Item three D, I want you to motion to accept the reading made next from number fourteen. If you have some questions. Second. And second, I'm gonna close to the law, and then questions or comments? During none. Hold on a favor.
Bye.
Question case. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Michael Fridge as a member of the park and recreation for, for the media buying your term, except for expire December one, twenty twenty-two.
So.
If you have any questions. Second, by councilman, you have, are there questions, uh, on the motion? Any none? Hold on a favor.
Bye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item five. Um, I recommend it to the small cities committee. I will entertain a motion to authorize the city twenty to submerge it, their current small cities building in the amount of nineteen thousand six hundred sixty million dollars from the second to third position. So the property market can acquire a fifty thousand dollar commonhold from twenty cities as further explained in Treasures of the Empire, as natural dating of the fourteen century.
So.
Um, I'm sorry, that shouldn't be submerge. I'm pretty sure that's subordinate, correct?
No.
Is it submerge? Or subordinate?
This is the way it's worded.
Okay, all right, then, thank you.
I'd like to stop you.
Oh.
Yeah, we under our own around.
Just, well, thank goodness the word of that is that you're about that. Um, all right, so, um, the motion stands as read, and I'm sorry, is that question? Well, then, make a motion. Thank you, councilman, hold on. Uh, questions? Or comments?
Yes, uh, in this project, this is in one of those, uh, the spirit of holidays, helping somebody out who needs it here. There's plenty of equity in the house. The house assessed at a hundred eighty-five, you range of that. Um, the first mortgage was Keaton's position, around sixteen thousand dollars. The bank's fifteen thousand will be second, and then the city's nineteen point seven will be third. And there's still eight thousand dollars in equity in the house, so I would recommend that we approve this.
Thank you, councilman. Other questions or comments? During none, hold on a favor.
Uh, no.
Any opposed? Moving on to item six. Uh, this is revisiting, uh, the table motion from last week. I'll entertain a motion to approve the building risk policy for the high school, middle school, and central office construction project, including the existing high school, to trap us insurance company, as further explained in the building committee pro chairs now dated November seventeen. Any approval on the building committee and the board of education?
Yes, April.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, we'll agree the pending, uh, so we're moving for approval of this. So, thank you, councilman, hold on.
Second.
And second, I'm gonna call some of the issues. During none, hold on a favor.
Bye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the building department report from September twenty twenty-two.
So.
If you have any questions. Second. Second, by councilman, hold on. Questions or comments? During none, hold on a favor.
Bye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item eight. I'll entertain a motion to release the survey of these needs as the rising corporation council's madam, Madam of November twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
So.
If you have any questions. Second. And second, by councilman, hold on. Questions or comments? Two one. Hold on a favor.
Bye. Bye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten. Yeah, excuse me, item nine. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recognition of the tax code for the authorized tax refunds issued in November twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
So.
Second. Second, by councilman, hold on. Questions or comments? During none, hold on a favor.
Bye. Bye.
Motion carries. Item ten, I want to take a motion to consider business by departments.
So.
Thank you, councilman, hold on. Second. Second, by councilman, hold on. Hold on a favor.
Bye.
Any opposed?
Bye.
And, um, Dan, anything for the center's office?
Just two quick, two quick things. First, a lesson for all of us. Submerge is a transitive verb, which means to put in the place of another or substituting something or someone, such as a second creditor, uh, for another with regard to a required client. So the pronunciation's correct. Um, second, just talking about small cities. Uh, the mayor was notified by the Department of Housing and State in Connecticut that they're going to be closing out our twenty fifteen small cities grant. Uh, so Moret and I will be working on that with Peter Tester from A &amp; E Services on Wednesday morning. We're gonna meet at nine o'clock. We hope to get that accomplished. Any questions?
I did the same thing, I Googled it fast. All right, anything from the center's office? All right, I will move into item eleven. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by Mayor and members.
So.
Thank you, councilman, hold on. If you have any questions, hold on a favor.
Bye.
Any opposed?
Bye.
So we'll start at the screen. Anything to see, David? Councilman, hold on.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Councilman, hold on.
That's me, so it's like Thanksgiving, everybody.
Councilman, hold on.
I, I just wanna say how exciting it was to have such a crowded auditorium tonight. Um, you know, I've spoken in favor of the project labor agreement for a long time, and I want to thank the council members that were supportive of it um, when it came to a vote, and the, the Board of Ed and the Building Committee that really had the foresight to investigate, um, doing something like this because it really is such a value add for our town. We have lots of, um, new family sustaining jobs for the young students that have gone through our school. Um, as well as Ms. Finor, who's now going to be able to have a job that she can raise her family with. And so, she, my brother was in the audience too, and, you know, he's been driving a very far way to, to be an operating engineer for almost two decades, and to have him be able to drive down the street to build the school that his son's gonna go to. Um, I can't think of any better way to secure that our building is gonna be built strong and, and safe than having the individuals that live here, and with their kids through the school building it. So, uh, just wanna say. And plus, a good way to get people into our city council meeting to meet.
And then have some, like, Mr. Ken Depper, challenge that was given.
Perfect.
I know, exactly. Always well said. Councilman, you need you.
Um, I just want to say thank you to Owen Quinn and, and Tom Kent Depper for all your, oh, it's not hearing about that, for all your efforts in the city of Torrington for many, many years. It's, uh, it's appreciated. Um, and also, it's great to see young people taking advantage of opportunities um, that could be careers.
Well, I don't think it's happening with that. Um, you know, one of the, um, conversations that we've been having lately after getting the community health needs assessment from Charlotte Urban Hospital, um, our affordable housing plan, uh, affordable housing, workforce housing, middle income jobs, those are the buzzwords that I hear a lot. Um, and when I say a lot, every day, several times a day. So I agree, there's nothing more heartwarming than seeing, uh, a group of, uh, young men and women being trained to get those middle income jobs that provide good benefits and health insurance that make it easier for you to stay in the city of Torrington. That is very rewarding. And, um, who knows for the, um, foresight to include that in that P L A? Because I do believe, if I'm not mistaken, Torrington is one of the only towns that actually put that in a P L A. So I can almost guarantee every other P L A will probably have it. But, um, credit to Ed and, um, Mario and the building you think. And that was a credit to them.
You usually get like one or two years of apprenticeships, uh, to project labor agreement, but Mr. Arms secured ten years.
Ten years.
Definitely the first of its type.
Yeah. So, um, with that said, um, I'll move into item twelve and entertain a motion to open the meeting back to the public for current unattended items.
So.
If you have any questions. Second, second, by councilman, hold on. Hold on a favor.
Bye.
Any opposed? Open to the public? Seeing here none, I'll move into item thirteen. There being no further business for further board, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir.
Councilman, you need to second that, councilman, hold on, hold on a favor. Any opposed? Happy Thanksgiving to all of you, and your formative, joyful song.